Okay, for this year we purchased two seventy-seven passenger buses and also one fifty-four passenger bus. Those are all in service. We also purchased one line passenger van. We planned to work to trade a van in on that. We decided not to. We kept that van because of how the demand is for vans this year and going into the future. For next year, I'd like to get actually four buses, three seventy-seven passengers, one fifty-four passenger, and then also a student van. And for our mail run and food delivery now, for years they have been using a student van. What I'd like to do in the future is actually get a cargo van in place of a student van so we actually would have that van to use in our fleet for students. So that's what the high roof line cargo van would be for. Again, there has to be discussion on that yet, what food services needs are, where they will be going. But to me, it's one way to free up a passenger student van. We have fifty buses in the fleet, so we try to keep them fifteen years. So every four or five years, instead of three buses, you know, I'll propose to get four. And that's why I have four for this year. We are trading in different used buses for all those vehicles. A little bit about vans. With the curriculum changes in the senior high school, they now need a van every day. We start with it a little bit after seven o'clock. So that is a van that is not available to us at all for anything else until after two o'clock. They would also like a second van on some days. That pretty well uses up the availability. I have listed just briefly some of the things that we get requests for vans from other staff members. So I would like to increase the amount of vans that we have available between athletics, curriculum changes, what other staff members need vans for periodically. And actually, I would like to leave two of them actually parked at the high school. We don't have room at the bus garage. So have two of them parked at the senior high school that they're more available for these curriculum special ed classes. They don't have to run to the bus garage every day to pick one up and run back and forth. The one van that we did get this year, it didn't put us ahead any because of our driver shortage. We did have one route that I had a bus on that actually the students would fit in a van. So I put a van on that run, took the bus off of it, which gave me another CDL driver to use on a different route. So briefly, that's vehicle purchases for the next school year. I would like, if by chance it was available, to get another student van this school year, and that would help tremendously. So again, that's a decision for the board. The information that I gave you, I have fleet information. That is sorted by the capacity of the buses. The start mileage is July one mileage. You'll see some of the numbers, bus numbers have an asterisk beside it. Those are buses that have surveillance cameras in them. We have thirty-four outfitted now. All the buses that serve the Exeter students have them, and quite a few of the spares that we would use for the Exeter students also have their surveillance cameras in. I also included the mileage that we ran last year. It's listed by vehicle number. The mileage is a little bit less than the previous year, but we only ran one hundred seventy-eight school days instead of one hundred eighty-one. So that would tend to be western that mileage, just a little bit shorter. The school trip requests were up. Most of that was the extra special ed curriculum classes that needed vans and athletic trips they were down to, so they basically stayed out the same. I also gave you information on the students that we transported last year. This is what I use to fill out the data for the state report. I have sixteen seventeen information there. The second page of that is how I derive the numbers. All the routes are listed with the numbers that are actually on the list. And I also gave you a fifteen sixteen if you want to compare to the year before. I also gave you a school directory of the schools that we are transported to every day. There are some schools that we contract out to contract to, so that's not every school that people who live in Exeter are going to, but it is the ones that we are transporting to. And then last, I have given you the route assignments, the drivers, the different ways that I have the schools pair on the different routes. Presently, we have five open routes that we substitute for every day. Every early dismissal that grows by two because we have two buses, one does a Burke's Christian and a Jacksonville Elementary with the English second language. The other one does a Burke's Catholic and overflow students that go to Wotton. On early dismissal days when we have to be at the elementary is at two thirty, and I also have to be at the Burke's Christian or Burke's Catholic at two thirty. That's the reason why those routes were open, and that gives us seven on those days. We have had drivers, people inquire about driving. We haven't had much success in getting drivers. Doesn't seem to be a job that everybody wants, and it's not very desirable job. We do have one person who's taking a driving test now that will help. About three or four said they were going to the school to get their school hours in. It just finished this past week, so we'll see if they follow through and get their permits, so we can start training them in the bus. If they all come through, that will help tremendously, but historically, it's all over the summer. It doesn't seem to be happening. So that's what I have. Any questions?
This is the second year in a row in terms of buying seventy-seven passenger buses and trading in ninety passenger buses. Is that a long-term trend?
Yes, we have very few of the nineties left. When enrollment started dropping, the nineties are very expensive to purchase, and to maintain, we found out they're very expensive to maintain. At the time when they put the emissions on, two thousand and seven was the first emissions, and that's when they told us there would be a seventy-five hundred dollar increase just because of emissions. That's when we started going to eighty-one passengers, and as enrollment still is declining, we went to seventy-seven. Seventy-seven, everyone can bid for. Every manufacturer can meet that spec. Some of those other specs kind of limited to just one manufacturer.
Thank you.
Mr. Rindman, have you ever explored propane buses? I mean, as far as I'm think, I think the diesel is far more expensive, and also, I don't think it's as good for the environment as both propane buses are. Do you have any concern about propane buses that you are constantly...
...range that a diesel bus has. I know, I think the contractor for Hamfield went to all propane, but they needed to keep diesel buses for their long trips because the propane doesn't have the miles. They don't get the miles per gallon. We've had, people show us propane. That was only one manufacturer. There are more players in it now. That might be the future. I don't know. With all the emissions that they have put on diesel buses, they aren't very good. They can't have that wrapped on the new diesel motors, but they're very...
Isn't propane more, less costly as far as cost of the propane?
That could be, but you don't have the miles per gallon. Instead of having seven miles to the gallon, you're going down to three and you have four miles per gallon. Very similar to what the gasoline motors were when we decided to go diesel, so you lose your efficiency that way. So fuel might cost less, but you're getting fewer miles per gallon for...
Well, I would like maybe that other district explore that, at least have some people from the propane industry that do this, or some school districts that do it, and maybe we can, you know, maybe we'll see a difference.
We had someone here, I think Rhodes Energy. We had them here and they talked to us. They showed us diesel bus. The engine, the engine was what they put in large pickups. And you get to drive it empty. You don't get to drive it full with the fifty high school students on. But it is there in the future, but it would be an investment. Right now, our present location, we don't have room to add anything, like another fuel tank. The other thing that, in the discussion with them, they have three or four people trained with fuel buses. So what it did, it added more full-time people to their staff. Not everyone's trained with fuel buses. So there's pros and cons to that area.
Well, I'm just concerned more about the impact than than... And I mean, I've looked at the way a number of school districts are going, and I, you know, I'd like to maybe, you know, to see.
And I'd like to hear from their F five years ago. I'd like to hear if they have one or two years. I'd like to hear if they have the F five.
Hey, I agree with you.
Rick, I have a couple of questions for you. Regarding right now, you said we're trying to get our buses out monthly fifteen years of life before we try to get rid of them. And I know previously, we're always looking at the life expectancy against reimbursements from the state. Apparently, there's a formula that starts diminishing at a certain point. Have they adjusted that because vehicles are lasting longer? Or where are we at with our reimbursement now?
To my knowledge, it's still ten years. And that's why after ten years, I'm going to try to get them to spare buses. Because you got to reimburse for group buses, the buses that, your vehicles that are transporting students to and from school. That's where you're getting the reimbursement for. So it's not, it's not a hundred percent. I mean, we spent a lot of money rebuilding a motor in an older bus, but that's not the way we could use it. Well, to get our money out of that bus, it's going to stay on route.
You mentioned that we got one van, you're hoping we get another van. How are we doing as far as, I would imagine that would also help for moving students to various locations or smaller teams for sports, whether it be the bowling team or something like that, or how are we doing with, now that our bowling team has to go to the other side of Reading to play?
Well, I don't have numbers yet for how many actually have the insurance for it. And the other issue there, the coach won't be available to drive the van. So if we have to put a driver in it, possibly it would be a van. If we only have six students that we have to transport, and there's a van available, yeah, that's the most we can offer to do. We don't have those numbers yet.
With regards to our van drivers, obviously, they probably don't need to have CDLs as their way of getting more movement, I mean, more of the availability of getting drivers or non-CDL, get vans operational in various routes for our longer routes where it's just one or two children, or are we already doing that right now?
We're already doing that.
Regarding our surveillance in our buses right now, you mentioned we have thirty-four. Does that cover our complete fleet, or are we still lacking at this point?
No, the fleet's fifty.
Excuse me?
Our fleet is fifty buses.
So we're still looking, we still need about sixteen more, how are we?
Yeah, to have absolutely every bus.
Have you had many incidences in the past year with early children in our buses of major levels?
That's daily. What you need surveillance for, sometimes it's very helpful. It's just, it's very time consuming to find what's going on, you know, the city watch the tape. And right now, we're having problems. They updated the software. Now we have problems downloading it. Depending how much time they want to get that on a different device to get to the principals to see it running a little bit of a problem with that.
Is that something Joe Way takes care of you for the transfer?
He helps me. Him, child, and culture, and so. The one issue, we only came on today.
Thank you. Just one question. If you, have you had any inspirations about the driver problem? I mean, is there something we could do to enhance that position in your opinion that would help to attract more people?
We did lose a few people because they needed that. That's a whole nother huge expense. And so unless you were able to actually use them eight hours a day, that's the only thing left.
And obviously, it's a great need out there, and it would be, it would be something that I think would attract people. There's no down bound that.
And we aren't the only person. Everyone in the state. In fact, it's actually nationwide.
Yeah, I understand that. We have the same problem with substitute teachers, but there's, at some point, there's got to, there's got to be some sort of an answer. Do the drivers, do we have drivers that have benefits or no? Or there are none? Okay.
Not health benefits. Not health.
Yes, okay, all right. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's pretty much what I meant.
To tag into what Russ said, when we're looking at the other school districts that are local, do their drivers that are working for private companies have benefits typically, or are they also just standard hourly?
In Burke's County, not so much. I think if you go towards Philly, there you might have some that do, not much.
Daniel Boone is the same type of condition as you.
Yeah, the contract, I don't know if any contractors are. It's only Wilson and us who own our buses. The contractors, they're in for a profit.
At the IU, the IU, we have the same problem attracting drivers, but we did lay on some incentives, and I'll be seeing them Thursday night, and I'll see exactly what it is. I know it wasn't much, but it gave us a little bit of a boost. So I'll get you to lay out what those incentives are, and we as a board can consider them.
I think one of the things that we need to do, if there's any way that we can differentiate ourselves from the rest of the market, I think that may be, that may be a tool to at least provide a few more drivers.
We can give them blue baseball caps.
That's it.
Toward those new dugouts.
Now, Mr. Rindman, I know that most of our students are transported here to the school district, but how many buses go to other places in the county to, you know, private schools or to Catholic schools or, you know, to down to Hottetown or wherever they go?
They're right here.
If you look at the bus route assignment, the last part, maybe, that shows the different schools. Very last part. We do have some that are paired, St. Catherine's is paired with Exeter routes, so they actually are doubled there.
So they go down to Westchester, I see?
We have most of the rural schools.
What does a rating mean when I'm seeing that next to the Breris bus numbers?
That's their pay. The rating is now in here, or two point seven five. They don't punch in and out in clocks. Roots are rated.
Can I just, Rick had mentioned about the need for, well, next year he has on here for two student vans, line passenger, but I just wanted to emphasize that Special Ed and Dr. Miller, she's indicated to us ideally they would like two vans for use at the senior high level, and it's for their crossroads program as well as other community-based programs. And some of that has replaced the PAL, which we used to have students go to the BCIU. And the cost of the BCIU for having them run the program PAL, what we're doing here now, full-time is thirty-three thousand, part-time sixteen thousand. So we've brought some efficiencies by having programs in-house, but we need a van, another van ideally, to support them the way that you want to support them, or need to. So I think maybe, you know, once the new models are starting to be manufactured, we buy up state contract, I could bring back to the board a price, you know, once we could get an estimate, contract price, maybe we can move ahead with one more for this year to help out the situation sooner than later. So I'll bring it back to you as soon as we have a price.
Mrs. Kutcher, do you have a question?
No, I think I'll take my pass on.
Any other questions for the board? Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Rindman.
You're welcome. If it's okay with the board, then I'll move on with getting specs together so that we can come back to the board with the video analysis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we get to the next section, we're doing a little follow-up on an item that came up a couple of weeks ago where there was a question about the legality of a tax refund to residents. And we have this evening our counsel from Street Stevens, Mr. Sean Lockinger and Mr. Lockinger. If you could maybe summarize your opinion as a follow-up to that, to that question.
Sure, certainly will. We looked into the process of a, whether it was legally permissible for the board to grant a tax refund to residents of the district in the middle of the fiscal year. And at the end of the day, our conclusion is it is not permissible. Let me give you three just basic reasons why we came to that conclusion. The first is that once, that it's, you're only allowed to make one levy, one tax levy per year. And while a refund is not a levy per se, it actually affects the levy, the one levy that you make. So there's some interpretation out there. There's some court cases that would say that subsequent action that changes the first levy is also a levy and therefore improper. The second thing we looked at is there are, there are forms of refunds or exemptions, forms of tax relief that are available. Refunds specifically in the middle of a fiscal year are not listed in the school code as to one of those things that are, you know, tax relief. Probably most importantly, and what I would point to as the biggest thing of all, is that there is pretty solid case law out there that says that a school board can only act within the powers that are given to it that are enumerated in the school code. In this case, there is nothing in the school code that specifically says you are allowed to grant a tax refund in the middle of a fiscal year. And so therefore, it's our conclusion that because that it's not an enumerated power, it is not a power that's granted by the school code, and therefore, technically speaking, legally speaking, the board cannot take that step. Any questions or anything?
I'd like to just address that issue if I might. I read Mr. Lockinger's interpretation. I think it's well reasoned and it's very supportive. But I think we also know that legal precedents are routinely challenged in the courts. This is exactly what is happening in docket number sixteen one nine six oh five, Exeter Township School District versus Exeter Township. This is the Bus Barn case that is being heard by Judge James Lilis in the Burke's County Court of Common Pleas. In this case, the majority of the sitting Exeter school board, in disagreeing with a standing legal precedent, voted to sue Exeter Township. So by its own example, the Exeter school board has shown little regard for legal precedents in terms of dampening the will of the board majority. And while Mr. Lockinger's citations are well reasoned, it still remains within the authority of the school board to pursue judicial relief in the issue of a tax refund should the board have the will to do so. Any other comments on the opinion?
Just, I'm not sure this is related, but I think it sort of goes along, and that is, we end up, we do business with, is it Brandywine? That'd be charter school, charter charter student. And they had relayed to us that they had approached the legislature about providing, providing a refund to users of excess funds, and the legislature said they did not have the right to do that because it wasn't in the law. And as far as your analogy to this court case about the Bus Barn, the court, this is really over an interpretation of use.
The law is over an interpretation. Everything's...
No, it's over, but it's over an interpretation of use.
No, it's over, the lawsuit itself, there's two lawsuits pending with, against Exeter Township. One is over zoning, and the other is over whether or not the township actually has a decision to be able to make in this process. We're actually challenging the township's decision. Again, lawsuits, Mr. Lockinger makes his living challenging legal precedent. That's what lawyers do. That's what you do. You go to court and you fight because you want to change a precedent in your behalf. All I'm saying is that the school board is standing behind an opinion from an attorney that could be challenged if there was a will to challenge it. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lockinger, for that. Move on to our next item on the agenda. Move on to our next item on the agenda. This is a discussion item. This is a follow-up to a request that came at our workshop meeting to review and possibly revise the timeline and procedure for the selection of the assistant superintendent. And when we had our special meeting, which was on a Monday a couple of weeks ago, we reviewed or had conversations about how that process would unfold. And there was a vote taken and a decision made. Since there's some continued, you know, question about that, debate about that, we want to open that up for review and discussion and possible amendment to that process. So I will actually turn it over to our personnel folks, Mr. Brady and Dr. Bender, for any recommendations you might have.
During our conversations, we were reviewing the suggested timeline. And in past practice, we've invited and encouraged the board to be present during the interview, during the second interview. The first interview has typically been a screening process that's occurred on a senior management level. The second interview is typically when we take a poll and typically it's committee of the whole. And that is why we're looking right now at round two. Specifically, it states board members, parentheses, personnel committee slash board president or designee, comma, principals. We're looking at striking the word person, board members, and then personnel committee, getting rid of just the personnel committee. So it's more encompassing of everyone that sits on this board, to involve everyone in that process and not restrict it to only a few individuals to be present and involved.
David, do you have anything else to add today?
Are you making a motion?
Was that the extent of the change?
That was the exchange, that was the change that I was aware of. Was there anything else that you were aware of when we were discussing that?
Yes, I was looking at the Board Policy 303 that refers to the employment of administrators. And in that, so I support Mr. Brady's recommendation for round two, but I'd like to extend the role of the board to round one, where the, for the initial interviews, that doesn't include any board members. And the basis for my recommendation is Policy 303 that says, "As representatives of the board, the personnel committee may be actively involved with the superintendent designee and the administration in improvement and selection for all employees of this district." And it goes on to say, "Members of the personnel committee are encouraged to attend the interviews conducted by the administration of candidates for such positions as teacher, administrator, instructional and non-instructional supervisors." So my recommendation to extend Mr. Brady's proposal to include representatives of the personnel committee in round one of the interview process. And that's based on our Policy 303.
Based on what David is suggesting, I would like to propose an amendment to what we had previously discussed, that in round one, we'll have the personnel committee involved in the interview process. And in round two, we would strike the words personnel committee and make it board members and all the others listed in that area.
Can I, a motion and a second discussion? So just to be clear then, Dave, as the chair, as the president of the school board, would be involved in that as well? So we'd have representation from Mr. Brady, Dr. Bender, Dr. Hamburger in round one. Is that correct? Assuming that's consistent with the timeline, because things could theoretically change if the timeline extends beyond your tenure.
Right, but if the timeline that was...
Or they were replacements.
Round one is proposed for the week of November 27th.
Right, which would mean you would be sitting at that point. Round two would be, is December 11th, which means that the new board, and at that point, round two would be open to all sitting board at that time, correct?
Yes.
That's what's being proposed.
Yeah, I have a question, just, what do you envision the board's role in this? Because my concern is that all nine members show up and they're actively involved, involved in the interview process. I think you overwhelm the candidate. I think that could just be... It's, I believe, it's, at least I know many of the interviews that I attended as a board member, really, I was more of an observer than I was an active participant in the interview.
This board has had the entire board at interviews of senior administrative level prior to the final vetting.
I don't remember that as a superintendent, but that's okay.
To me, that actually shows the candidate the involvement of the school board and their commitment to getting the top candidate here in the district.
But it takes some orchestration. You just can't have nine extra people throwing out questions.
Oh, no, it was always organized. Everyone was assigned questions.
There was typically a list of questions that came forward prior to the evening. And then the group that was going to participate in the interview would each identify a question they would ask. It would consistently be the same question that would be asked to the interviewee.
Your amendment is not specific, and that's my concern about the amendment.
I don't know.
I've been on the same, been on the board at the same time as Mr. Deesiger. I remember interviewing every one of our high school principals. One of them under Nick Corvo and the rest of them under Dr. Martin. I feel it's absolutely necessary that the board be able to conduct, participate in those interviews more than just one individual. There are many, the board is the authority to hire. The board is the authority to contract. And it's essential that the board know the background of the individual, have the ability to ask the individual that we would ultimately select questions. They also have, there's also prudent for them to know what alternatives are there. The board establishes policy, the board hires, the board fires, and the board appropriates money. And it's, to do it without that background knowledge is to operate in the blind. So I, that's why I endorse this recommendation.
So just to clarify, you're saying that the board members would function as sort of an integral part of the interview process as equal partners on each of these interview teams, round one and two? Is that correct? Is that the recommendation?
That was not what I...
The recommendation, as I understand it, was round one was Personnel Committee and you. Round two was the sitting board on December 11th.
Right, but I mean, the board members who are participating in those two rounds would function as my peers, let's say, on the interview team. They're not there as observers. They're there with the same level of input, the same level of involvement and the same decision-making responsibilities of anybody else on that.
Well, I'm relying on the policy that says I may be actively involved.
The opposite word is "may".
And actively involved.
Can I just say that there is another policy and it's 302, and it speaks directly to the hiring of the assistant superintendent, not other administrators. And we're talking about the assistant superintendent. So I'm not sure whether that particular policy would actually be applicable, but I hear what you're saying for other positions.
I'd like to ask this, Lister. We did pass something at a special board meeting. Now, now we're trying to pass something different. Is that, is that possible to do this?
Yes, you can amend. You can either vote to rescind and then pass a new, you know, a new procedure or in this case, you can just amend it and vote to amend the prior procedure. Yes.
So then which policy are we working on? The one that you said, Mr. Bender?
There are two policies. One has to do with, you know, hiring administrators. The other is the hiring of the superintendent and assistant superintendent. The hiring of the superintendent, assistant superintendent is Policy 302, not 303.
And you were talking about 303, Dr. Bender?
Yes, and under the guidelines, Part Three of Policy 303, it says administrative positions shall be deemed to be superintendent, assistant superintendent, and goes on to include others. So assistant superintendents included in this policy.
And Dr. Phillips, you had given us a timeline. Is this kind of the same timeline as what we're talking about now?
I don't believe it's a timeline. It's a makeup that I've heard. Sorry.
No, but there are dates in here, Bob. The dates were not changed. Is that correct? That was your...
I haven't heard anything about dates at this point.
We have a, we have a copy of something here. She's just asking you whether it's what we just passed before.
Not, she asked about dates, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I haven't heard any amendment to dates at this point.
We're not discussing the date.
There's not going to be any changes in the dates.
As planned by Dr. Phillips, we do not plan on altering that unless we find there's an extenuating circumstance that we would discuss at another time.
I guess a question I have is just more theoretical, but, you know, there is a, there's a board switchover during this period of time. And I do wonder about the transfer of knowledge and information as we go from the board. Well, I guess two out of three guys will actually still be here, so...
Well, I think what I'm looking at is during that first interview, there would be more individuals outside of Dr. Hamburger, Dr. Bender, or myself that would be involved in that. And we would just be three parties that were listening to other input, whether it would be other principals, it's going to be other people who are with us. And we would just be able to express our opinion on the candidate that came forward. But then, when our new board is with us in December and they're able to interview, they would be looking at a group that had been reduced and considered to be a little bit more of the individuals we'd like to move forward with. So we wouldn't be restricting anyone that's going on the board from being a persistent.
Well, I'm not suggesting that you are. I mean, I think we had actually agreed back on October 2nd that in effect, we would follow that initial timeline, that this board would not rush to make a judgment, but that we would hand off the process to the incoming board. And I think the issue relative to the timeframe outside of the amendment that you guys just made was that these guys, the candidates, many of whom are here tonight, who may be sitting on December 5th, have asked for a role. And I think originally, I don't think they were expecting a role to be interviewing the finalists one time. So you've changed that, which I think is...
Well, they'll be able to interview twice on it.
Right, on the, they'll arrange it on the 21st. I mean, I, and I'll say this, I mean, I appreciate your amendment and I support your amendment. I still believe that the selection is the superintendent's selection. I do believe there's a lot of value in having a collaborative process. You know, the position is really a recognized agency. The state can only be certified by a positive vote by the sitting board. And I think that you kind of achieve that positive vote by being involved in the process and having the confidence in the candidate that you've selected. I talked to Wilson Schukel Valley in the last two days, both of whom invited their boards to be part of the process. Basically because they understand the importance of the involvement in that process through onboarding that person in that role who's critical to executing the mission of the school district. So, you know, I am supportive of that amendment that bridges both the responsibility of this board and also acknowledges the fact that the new board who comes in will also have a role.
But I'd like, Carol?
I would like to add one other caveat to this. And I think it's important because the assistant superintendent has assumed a strong curriculum position in our school. And we have this, you know, wonderful K-12 expansive idea of what curriculum is going to be about. So I would suggest that we add the Language Arts Coordinator and the Math STEM Program Coordinator, both of which have a K-12 perspective of what we're trying to accomplish in our school.
Those would be additions to what has been proposed in the motion?
And that would be for round one. I think they will just have insights by seeing these different people and they will have something to offer to the, you know, and to offer that might prove to be very valuable.
Ian, ready for your opinion?
I think they would, I think that tying me into where Carol is suggesting, I think that would go along with saying department chairs and would fit into that area. I think that would be acceptable. I don't know if we'd have to amend anything to accomplish that.
I just want to make...
But they're not listed in the...
No, they're not. They're not.
You know, the change would be, were you saying at the first level or something?
Well, we have an amendment on the floor, so she would have to amend the amendment.
No, this is...
If you want to include these folks by name, then you're going to have to amend.
All right, that's my amendment.
What is your amendment?
To include the Language Arts Coordinator and the Math STEM Program Coordinator in round one of the, of the interviews.
Second.
Thank you.
Not present, although it's a bit unusual since we do have the candidates in the audience. Could we invite comment from them since they were most likely to be involved in this?
Well, we're just about approaching public comment, so I don't, I personally don't have a, any opposition to that if...
My thought is we're about to vote on this. And since we have, we have modified what might have been the normal procedures to allow their participation, I think if they'd like, when the new board is sitting, they can modify this procedure. It'd be better to have it concurrents at the moment.
Well, let me, before we entertain public comment on that, let me give you my perspective on it. Because I have been thinking about this quite a bit and I have a different outlook on it. My concern is with a process that has the school board conducting the terminal interviews in the candidate vetting process. I don't believe it's consistent with the intent of the school code. Or our district policy, where the primary responsibility of interviewing and recommending candidates should be in the hands of our professional staff and our superintendent. Done some research on this issue and the sources that I find indicate that nationally, the recognized best practice is that board members should not participate in interview process for hiring for positions other than that of a superintendent. Selection of the best candidate should be based upon a process of vetting by seasoned administrators and staff that are most familiar with the skills necessary for serving in this position. With all respect to our school board members who are well intentioned, most of us are laymen and are not professionally trained educators with experience in pedagogy or educational practice. In Exeter, our assistant superintendent has a clearly defined skill set with specific responsibilities and must be knowledgeable and experienced with all aspects of the K-12 curriculum. Best practice teaching techniques, including differentiated instruction. Must be able to provide or coordinate professional development for staff administration. And also must be an expert in student assessment and data analysis and data interpretation. And ultimately, familiar and intimate with the diverse aspects of the district's comprehensive plan. The school board overreach in the candidate selection process diminishes, I think, the role and expertise of our professional staff. I don't mean to disrespect or devalue the school board members and their importance in the hiring process. The board already has several critical roles in the hiring processes, Mr. Quinn has pointed out. The board sets the policies for the hiring, they approve the position, they set the salary and the benefits. They determine the terms of the contract. And the board also has final approval in regard to the hiring of any recommended candidate. So my only interest is really getting the most qualified individual for this position. And I think that could be best done by limiting the board's involvement and trusting the skills and expertise of our professional staff who do this sort of thing routinely and do it so well. So I believe the process that's previously described, with the exception of Mrs. Kutcher's amendment, should remain unchanged, that's my position. Although we have a... Although we have a motion on the table. And we also, at this point right now, would entertain some comments from any of the incoming board members relative to your opinion if you'd like to.
Excuse me, if I could interject, Dr. Hamburger referred to policy three oh two, employment of superintendent, assistant superintendent. So I brought that up. And one of the guidelines is a screening process shall be established that ensures the board has an opportunity to interview a sufficient number of finalist candidates so that an appropriate range of choices is available for finalist selection. So I think.
Well, there are two sections to that, though. I think there's one related to the assistant superintendent, one to the superintendent. I just want to make sure that as you're describing that, that it's not relative to specifically the superintendent.
I think it's in, I don't think it breaks down either or. I think it's just above.
So superintendent or assistant superintendent?
Because what I read is the board shall seek applicants for the position of assistant superintendent by recommendation of the superintendent. And that's directly from three oh two.
So here's what I read. And it's under equipment guidelines.
This is what I'm reading.
Yeah, it says assistant superintendent.
By recommendation of the superintendent.
Mm-hmm. That's under the authority.
Well, I think there's a lot of may, a lot of may and optional language in there. And my opinion is based primarily upon a lot of the body of evidence out there that I'm seeing from educational ethics commissions and from state education associations, state school boards associations, that strongly suggests this is essentially an overreach in form of micromanaging of the school board.
I would like to ask a question of Dr. Phillips. Do you have a problem with the school board being involved in this process?
Not at all. There was involvement, from the beginning.
Thank you. Mrs. Hacker?
Yes.
Thanks for joining us today.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to speak as well. And it's very informative during everyone's perspective. I do agree with Mrs. Kutcher about having some staff members personnel involved in the process.
I'm sorry, they need to hear on here, for some reason this isn't working.
Okay. Because as an educator, and hopefully going to be sitting on this board shortly, with all due respect, you had mentioned that we currently maybe don't have an educator with the knowledge about curriculum and pedagogy and so forth, which is one of the reasons why I think we needed a current educator sitting on this board. I do know what I would be looking for in assistant superintendent for our students and our teachers, specifically because the assistant superintendent works so closely with staff, professional development, and the curriculum. And I feel personally, one of the pieces of the puzzle I would like to bring by sitting on this school board is that educator perspective of pedagogy and being in the trenches, knowing what's going on firsthand, and becoming very, having a very close relationship with the assistant superintendent. And I would personally, I mean, I can only speak as a candidate at this point and not on the board, but I feel very important, I feel it's very important. And I can't remember the document I had with me last time I spoke, but the relationship between the board and assistant superintendent and superintendent is such a critical piece in getting along and working collaboratively for student success. And we want to value our superintendent and our assistant superintendent and want to feel like there's mutual respect. And therefore, I think there needs to be, we all need to be a part of that process. Not necessarily like the very beginning process as we mentioned. I kind of agree with the timeline that's been set out so far. But by second round, third round, I think that I liked the amendment that all, the whole board should be involved. And I liked the idea that we all have our own specific question. We come out, you know, we discuss that prior to the meet and read, interview process with the last few candidates, but not just down to the last candidate. There's no way that I would approve a contract on someone I've never met or talked to. Questions? Okay, thank you. Oh, I do have one more thing, sorry. Sorry, I just. And Dr. Hammer, you had mentioned that how do we know he or she is qualified? Like, what's our expertise in knowing they're qualified? Well, if we're sitting on this board and we know what our curriculum is, we know what the standards are, we know how to, we know what level of success, we want our students to, you know, graduate, so forth, we should be qualified board members to be able to be part in hiring a superintendent or assistant superintendent. And if that is, I look at a school board as somebody being very intelligent in the business aspect and the finance aspect. And, you know, every person plays a role. And we should, again, you know, I'm repeating myself now, but the role I feel like I would bring to the board and I would play in this process would be, I think I would know if they're qualified. How do they feel about certain things throughout PA? Like Common Core and Special Education and Satter School and all those things. But again, specifically, an assistant superintendent works so closely with the staff and the curriculum and professional development. And I think that's, we need an educator, we need our board to be supportive of who we choose for our staff at Exeter, our teachers and our educators and our paraprofessionals to feel confident with the choice we've made. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Hager. And I would contest you, you were probably one of the exceptions to the majority of school board members throughout the state, you know, who does have a background worked actively in education. So you do bring obviously your skill set, you know, to the table.
Thank you.
But I'd just like to say, it is the superintendent's choice. We might have input, but the superintendent is the one who picks who his assistant will be or her assistant, you know, if it's a female superintendent, they pick who the assistant will be.
But the superintendent cannot let a contract.
Right, they approve.
The superintendent cannot let a contract. The board has the final say.
I understand that, but I would hope that if, yes, we need to support our professional staff and have some confidence in them. So I, you know, I would hope that if the superintendent picks an assistant, that the board will support that position. Because I know when Dr. Davies was being interviewed and a number of other candidates, we listened to them all, we had input. But I remember that Dr. Martin picked the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, her assistant. And I would hope that's what we would do.
I would beg differ.
That is not the practice that was carried on that time.
Pardon me?
We used our normal procedure of putting the thing up on the board and getting the numbers.
That's true.
That was, and they accepted the recommendation, but the board picked the assistant superintendent.
Just as we picked the superintendent. And I think that Dr. Bender would concur that is been the practice over the decades that he has been present.
Well, there we are, managing it.
Sure.
I just wanted to agree with part of Dr. Emmer's sentiment about excluding board members from the first round of interviews. I think that's more of a test of capability than it is what direction that the board wants to see the assistant superintendent take in conjunction with the superintendent. Bringing along what you had said, we are exceptions, with exceptions, we are laymen. And we have, in my opinion, probably have the best capability of assessing whether somebody is capable to complete the job that they are required to. And I think that that would be a better thing that the administrators should be included in. For the second round, though, I think that that would be more appropriate for smaller portions of the board to participate in. Because I think that there was reasoning behind not including the entire board in an early selection process due to certain requirements that you got with the sunshine act. And how that you were unable to make, well, you're not unable, but certain of your commitments may turn into legal requirements. And I think that that just might be more appropriate to leave to the entire board making the selection at the third stage and smaller groups of the board being involved in the second stage. I think also aside from that, that there's a question of what the current board's involvement is versus the next board's involvement. What we talked about beforehand, in ways the candidates are speaking of, what we had mentioned beforehand is that we believe that it was appropriate for the next board to take this decision under their own weight rather than leave it up to the current board. And while it's not entirely different from what you're suggesting, if the policy committee of the current board is making a decision about which candidates are going to move forward to the second round, then the current board is using their authority to influence what the next board will have the decision to make through. And I think that it would be more appropriate for the board to leave themselves out of that decision and not influence what the administrators and other staff members are going to decide during that first round of interviews. So that's just my thoughts.
Thank you for, thanks for coming.
Mr. President, I would submit that we are at the sitting board. The first round is a matter of getting rid of the chat. And for the personnel committee to be involved is entirely appropriate. And for, I have already mentioned the reason that the entire board should be involved in interview more than one. And the entire board has the right of contracting and the right of appropriation.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Michelle Stran, and I also just wanted to reiterate my opinion, which is very similar to Jasmine's. I'm new to this process. But it seems to be that as a board, we get to vote yes or no to the candidate. I don't know how I, hopefully being on the board in a few months, can vote on someone that I don't personally know. I don't know how I could make a judgment on that. I don't know how I could feel that that person is a good person that I could work with, that the superintendent could work with, that our teachers could work with. And the only way that I could know that I could vote yes in confidence would be to meet that person. Seeing what someone looks like on a piece of paper and their credentials doesn't tell me a lot about that person. It doesn't tell me if they work well with others. It doesn't tell me if they're nice, if they're friendly. I would much rather meet that person and make a judgment on them, meeting them, than seeing them on a piece of paper. And that's not to say that I don't trust the superintendent's judgment, because I absolutely would, because they're choosing several candidates. So they already have their say. They come to us for two or three. They've already picked the two or three top people. So then I'm just saying, okay, I've met those people and yes, I agree that I like that person. And I can agree if I haven't met that person.
But I just clarify that the initial proposal that was in place did give an opportunity for the full board to interview the final candidate that was recommended for the position. Or candidates, this says final candidate, but were candidates for the position. So finalists would have a chance to interview with the board. So the intent was to make sure, to not necessarily participate in the interview process, to make sure the person you're voting on, you'll get a chance to know, you know, thoroughly.
Can I agree with that?
Before you have that final vote.
Yes, my concern is, I don't think concerns mean one person. So if it comes down at the end and I'm meeting one person, how can I compare or judge them to someone else? So in the end, whether I'm meeting someone around two or I'm meeting them around three, or if I'm meeting them around 100, I need to meet more than one person to make an accurate judgment on what kind of person I think that they are and how I think that they would work with this district, with our teachers, and essentially with my child that goes to this store. You can't vote on someone that you don't know. And I feel that way about the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and also principals. Has anyone here met the proposed principal for a walk-in brief by any chance? Other than superintendent?
I think that gentleman might be here tonight.
I'm sorry, why?
That gentleman may be here this evening.
He may be, but has anyone met him other than superintendent? That's my question.
I've gone through three rounds of interviews.
No, I don't think board members have had any.
There have been other people that have met you, just not us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of the panel?
I'd just like to just jump in again and say that I do think that as a board member, the majority of us haven't gotten onto the board to be here to approve class trips. We've gotten on the board to be involved in both the strategic direction of the district and policy. That's what a board does. One of the most important people in carrying out the strategic direction and policy is the assistant superintendent. And because of that, and because of the interplay between the board, I think it's critical that we have the ability to be as involved in this process as we can be.
Any other comments?
Well, just a comment, a real brief comment. But I would like to second, and thank you for the work that you did. I spent a year as a member of the Penn State School Boards Association and spent a year earning a fellowship in school governance. And best practice is exactly what Dr. Emmer said. And again, I've said it probably for the last three meetings, I think we need to really be careful and reconsider about overstepping our bounds and like we're managing. And I see it every day with this board. And it's become a great disappointment to me.
Okay, are there any other comments? Would I like to move this forward for a vote?
I need to agree, Mark, it's what we're voting.
Yes, can we? Yeah, so can someone reiterate the motion, since we've had so much discussion?
Mrs. Quinter, this is John. This is Mrs. Quinter.
Mrs. Quinter, yes.
Confined it. Two pages.
Yeah.
Oh. Let's see theirs together.
No, sir, her and mine.
Now, what we have to vote on first, what's technically on the table now, is the amendment that was made.
The amendment to the amendment.
Correct, the amendment that is going to be put on. That's what's being voted on.
Mrs. Kutcher recommended, seconded by Mr. Brady, that the language arts coordinator and STEM coordinator be added to the interviewing group in round one, in round one.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for that. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Now, that's amended to the original amendment that was made. So the original amendment now includes that language, and that's what the vote would be on that. And so can we have a reiteration of that original amendment, or the original amendment? Which from my understanding was that round one would include the personnel committee and the board president are designated, and round two would include all board members. Yeah, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And as amended with Mrs. Kutcher's.
Yes, with Mrs. Kutcher's amendment. So with a motion and a second, all in favor?
Excuse me, is the superintendent involved in this?
Oh. Do you want to be involved, Bob?
It's right there. It's like a switch. He would be the person right before the period and prior to the next sentence, question slash answer plus presentation and or writing sample. That would be the superintendent before the period and that centers inside the directions that are given in the document that's provided in tonight's agenda.
Okay, are we all clear? Anyone in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on. To public comments. So if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to come up, this is the time, speak to anything relative to what's on the agenda, as well as anything that may be applicable for what you do.
Clearly, I like to talk.
And Ben, please introduce yourself and.
Jasmine Hacker. I just wanted to say something, Mr. B. Singer, about micromanaging. And I completely agree with you. I think that a school board should not micromanage specifically in each school. However, I think your superintendent and your assistant superintendent and your administrators are really the basis, the foundation of letting them then go do their thing. So to me, micromanaging would be in the schools and checking out the teachers and the aides and so forth. I think that it is the board's job to hire the most effective, most qualified superintendent, assistant superintendent, as well as administrators. Because ultimately, those are the people that we're going to trust them to further and spread, you know, spread out the knowledge and the qualifications and the effective, I can't think of the word I want to say, but I picture like a tree and we are the roots. And then we build up from there. But our roots mean. But our roots need to be trustworthy and solid in who we choose. So I agree with you. I don't want to micromanage at all. I want to trust my principals in each district, or, sorry, in each school. I want to trust, clearly trust my superintendent more than anything, as well as the assistant superintendent. And I want our teachers to feel that trust as well, because our board did their job in choosing the best qualified candidates. So I appreciate what you said, but I just, I don't know, got a little like hot in there that I found it there where I wanted to say, no, I don't want to micromanage, but I think those key roles are such a foundation for us to be a part of.
There's a ton of literature you could spend some time with.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, folks. Jerry Gellif, 106 Michelle Drive. I'm going to talk to you tonight about the proposal to hire on KCBA as a superintendent of buildings. Their cost structure, or their fee structure is pretty high. And at 12%, and if, most of the things are going to fall into the 12% area and even in the 100,000 to 250,000, it's going to cost us a lot of money. And I would like to see a little more work done to find somebody, because 1% or 2% on $15 million a building is going to be a lot of money. Money that can be put to better use than lining somebody's pockets. So I'd like to ask you to table that until some more liable firms can be assessed. You shook your head, Bob.
I think if you were to look at professional services, you're typically put into a graduated scale, where you, when you have a less contract, you're going to see a greater percentage of fee that brought upon you. And when you bring the sum up to a larger number, it proportionally reduce, because it takes into economies of scale. I think when you're looking at 12% on a $200,000 contract, though it does look like a substantial amount of money, when you start looking at hourly rates for individuals and then put the typical overhead structure that goes on that, you're looking at trying to recoup your costs for what's anticipated to be involved, because it's the individuals that we're looking at bringing onto the project would be writing our scope and then providing the inspection services and verification that contracts are followed through according to what's been upon. So in this case, I think looking at from a professional point of view, I think that the structure is correct, as long as they are providing what we anticipate they're going to be involved in. And our goal would be to be able to package things in such a way that we're not looking at the $100,000, $200,000 jobs, but coming in, for example, they were looking at like a $2 million project, so we can then bring that fee down to get a lower percentage and get the most bang for our buck at the same time.
Okay, but aren't there, in the economy that we have?
The economy we have right now for engineers has recovered in the last six to seven years. I think right now, we're actually working at a very tight location, at least with engineering. I could tell you that everyone I know that is an engineer, if they're qualified, they're working without a problem, and typically our backlog is one to three.
Okay, but still, in the economy that we have, with the experience that you're speaking of, and with the amount of competition, there's got to be somebody out there at 10% as opposed to the 12%. And that 2% is a huge amount of money.
I think then we would have to have parties, if you're aware of, that would come to us and then explain to us their services that we would interview, similar to when we did the KCBA, to be able to identify them as the party you're working with.
Or perhaps, the board, or whomever it would be, could go out and do that, do that work and find somebody. Because we're talking about the taxpayer.
We did this, Oprah.
I'm sorry?
We already did this, when we brought KCBA in.
No, I don't think we did it per project. We brought them in to assess our facilities. And while they are capable and competent, I think what Mr. Gellif is saying is that we should just follow a bid process. I think that's what he's saying.
I don't think, you don't bid professional services to them.
You don't have to bid professional services.
It's typically not a practice.
I know, it's typically not a practice, but if the school district wants to say that it is looking to save every penny that it can, then maybe it's something to consider. I think that's what Mr. Gellif is saying.
Exactly what I'm saying, because I mean, when you talk, I mean, I'm not now doing campaigns, because I'm running for the board. I spoke to one person, my neighbor Chuck, who was 72 years old and retired when he was 58 from CARTEC. Now Chuck is looking at having to go back to work to pay taxes. And it's, you know, I don't care what anybody says, that's criminal. This guy having to go back to work after 14 years to pay taxes. And we've got to give these people, ourselves included, some relief. And if we can save $700,000, $500,000 in fees for KCBA, I mean, it goes a long way to holding the line on taxes for these people. We've got senior citizens who are moving out because they just cannot afford us anymore. And every penny does need to be conserved. So one more thing I'd like, if I may, the roof on Jacksonville Elementary, which I know this was discussed one month ago or maybe two months ago, and I should have stood up then, but the meeting was going real long again. So it was brought in by WTI, Trinco, supposed to cost $284,000. And in their cover letter, they say that they're going to hire Warco Roofing to do the actual work. Well, by that, in that letter, it says to me that WTI is working as a general contractor. Why do you need a general contractor for a single-stage project? Anybody would understand, if you're putting up a school building, you need somebody to dig a foundation, you need somebody to build the building, you need a roof, et cetera, et cetera. You need a general contractor to pull all those threads together and get things done on time. But in a single-stage project, you've got a company working as a general contractor. How much are they charging us? How much money are we wasting when we've got Rob Perzouy here, who could go out and get those bids and find the best way to deal with it? And it wouldn't cost us a thing. So how much of that $284 is going to WTI?
Yeah, why, can you explain why we are using them at this point?
The district has had a roof replacement program for a number of years through Trinco. They do, it's part of a joint purchasing program. They write the specifications, they select the best roofers. And what we have found very economical is that they really do promote a restoration, not necessarily a complete tear-off and replacement. They have a technology that we're using and using at Jacksonville where it's restoring, so, and giving us 30 years. So on a cost per square foot, doing a restoration is much more economical and getting 30 years than doing a complete tear-off where you could get, what, 20 years on that, or maybe 30? But, you know, we checked out the prices on cost per square foot on doing this, we are getting a bigger bang for our buck and getting 30 years out of it. We have used them for, and this was started with the previous facility director, and having an ongoing restoration on a lot of our roofs. Now, some of them we have replaced, but because of this, which we believe is a good technology, we have saved a lot of money, you know, over the years.
So are we saying that Mr. Perzouy is not capable of doing that same job for nothing?
I think what we're saying is that we have had an arrangement with the roofing company Trinco to monitor the roofs on all of our buildings. They come to us with recommendation, or they come to Rob with recommendations, and it's a coordinated effort, using their expertise and using Rob's expertise for other things that he's responsible for. It's not a new relationship. It's been going on for years and has proven to be economical over those years. So as far as Warco doing it, we don't really care, because they're working under the...
They're working under...
Under the state contract.
I'm not concerned about Warco, I'm concerned about...
No, you're concerned about it being subcontracted and how much Trinco's making on it. The fact is, it's being done under a state contract, so there is no difference in pricing, no matter whether we deal directly with Warco or whether we go through Trinco.
Okay, so then that $284,000, all of it is going to Warco?
I am not going to sit here and argue the specifics. I'm just telling you the truth, and you can accept them. I'm sorry, all right?
Aye. All right.
Any other comments from the public this evening? Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to the next section of the agenda, five minutes. I moved that we approve the board workshop minutes from September 12th, and I deprimed the board voting minutes from September 19th.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Treasurer's report. Mrs. Page.
I move the treasurer's report for the period ending 9/30/2017. Following financial statements are attached. The YTD summary of revenue and expenditures, all funds, statements of assets, liabilities, and fund balances, payroll and fringe benefits summary, investment statements, student activity and athletic fund. Thank you.
I didn't hear a second. Second, okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next section is board policy. We have six policies for second reading. This is where we make final approvals for these policies. We have one policy for alternative instruction, another for adult education, class size, assessment system, homework, and religious holiday cultural activity observance. I'd like to break these up in two sections, because the following, after that, have a first reading, so I'd like to make a motion for, to approve the, those first six policies for second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next six policies are first read policies. We've had an opportunity to have some discussion at our recent workshop meeting, some amendments were made to some of these policies, some minor changes to language, which we've had opportunity to discuss. Those would be the home education program, the extracurricular participation by home education students, English as a second language, charter schools, extracurricular participation by charter, cyber charter schools students and migrant students. So I move that we approve these six policies for first reading. Second. The motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Disfunctions, Dr. Hemmer.
Item 8A. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the suppression of Plan Fund Part K to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for the partial current refunding of the General Obligation Bond Series 2011 to the issuance of General Obligation Bond Series 2017.
Second.
The motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Item 8B. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors exonerates Exeter Township School District tax collector from the collection of the remaining 2016 per capita tax duplicate for Exeter Township consisting of 1,495 delinquent per capita and 674 exonerated per capita bills. And authorize the district to submit the delinquent per capita bills to Berchheimer Associates for collection. Prior year consisted of 1,474 delinquent per capita and 613 exonerated per capita bills.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8C. Resolved, the Board of School Directors of the Exeter Township School District authorize a settlement of the assessment appeal filed by Carbo Group Limited, number 15-20243, Berks County Court of Common pleas, in accordance with the attached stipulation. And resolve further that Leah Rottenberg Esquires authorize to execute the stipulation on behalf of the school district.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. President, I abstain from that vote.
Thank you.
Item 8D. Resolved, the Board of School Directors of Exeter Township School District authorize a settlement of the assessment appeal filed by Exeter Township School District, number 16-20158, Berks County Court of Common pleas, in accordance with the attached stipulation. And resolve further that Leah Rottenberg Esquires authorize to execute the stipulation on behalf of the school district.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Item 8E. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors award the Exeter Township School District varsity softball dugout project base bids for general construction electrical to the following lowest responsible bidders. Base bid general construction, Bolton Construction Inc., base bid electrical, A.N. Lynch Co.
The motion and a second. Any discussion?
I have a question. Somebody give us a first, a square foot price on these dugout?
I can't give you a square foot, but I can tell you that I've looked into, Wilson is building dugouts on their softball field on the basis of the article...
Title IX.
Title IX.
Yeah, okay.
Some complaints there. Theirs is on flat land. They're also not getting the additional fencing that we're getting to complete the project here. Ours, we have to dig out into the bank, which were that, and then on the other side, they had to extend the foundation down because we're on the downslope of the hill. So the architect took a look at these, at this bid, and analyzed it based upon his experience, and he felt that we were getting the best we were going to get. So we're still under Title IX. I really don't want to see, yeah, the light department or this school district getting all their voted.
I know, Bob. It just seems so extravagant.
I know.
Dugouts, you know what I mean? I'm looking for bathrooms and showers and stuff.
Russ, just to clarify, I know that it's listed here as dugouts, and, you know, Mr. Perzouy could correct me if I'm wrong. I believe at the last meeting, he thought the pricing was fair, but what we're also doing is we're surrounding the entire, included in this proposal, I believe, is the entire fencing down the first and third base lines, as well as the fencing associated with the bullpens. So basically, where you are enclosing the field, which is a player safety issue and a fan safety issue, it minimizes the possibility of somebody coming onto the field, and it minimizes the possibility of somebody who's chasing a foul ball running into the crowd. So there's more than just dugouts.
No, Russ, if we were to...
How big do you think a dugout is?
If we were to renovate the junior high, we could get it cheaper.
Then 158, yeah, you probably could, yeah.
Because that's how we got it to be, to be a senior high.
No, I just, I'm sorry. Maybe it's becoming an age issue. Now everything I see just seems outrageously expensive. I can't even go to the grocery store anymore, it just drives me nuts.
Yeah, I'm just going to, I'd just like to say that I am going to be voting against While I do agree, obviously, that we need to provide dugouts, I'm opposed to the plan that we used, the specific plan that we used, and the absorbent costs that are included here. I mean, I know we referenced the Title IX in an effort to provide equal access to programs and comparable facilities and resources, but I fail to see where Title IX requires us to provide identical facilities, and that's kind of what we've done here. We've sort of taken the exact plan that we used for the, you know, the boys' baseball field and superimposed that onto the softball field. So I believe in this case that there's essentially been a misinterpretation of the legal requirements essentially been a misinterpretation of legal requirements to suggest that anything short of the same structure would be unfair or discriminatory, which I don't think it would be. As a board, I think we also look for ways to control and curb costs. And this proposal is not really, in my way of looking at it, adhere to that principle. So for those reasons, I'll vote no, but I am receptive to an alternative proposal with substantially reduced costs.
Well, I think that the board should remember that it has made some earlier decisions related to that athletic field being equal to boys, and while I understand you're looking at it through the lens of a legal perspective, I'm also looking at it through the lens of a moral perspective, and I think that girls are equal to boys, and I will support this.
I agree with that as well. But I think if you look around the county, I would say that there are few softball fields, and maybe Wilson is an exception, that really have this elaborate type of structure that would be used, what, 10 times a year for our softball players to really play their game. And I think it's excessive, I think it's exhaustive, and the amount of money stuns me, and I think about what really that money could be used for if it were applied to educational services and programs. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion and a second?
May I ask, are there other options for dugouts other than the ones that are being suggested?
I'm not familiar with any other alternatives that were provided.
Good evening. Yes, there are other alternatives. There's the dugouts remodels, as was discussed after the boys varsity dugouts, which have a storage facility, which have electric, no running water, no showers, no easy. So, you know, those dugouts could be scaled back. Again, you're probably not looking at that much of a cost difference. There are temporary or modular dugouts that I personally don't find appealing, but they are an option. I did look into that when this was first being discussed. Never got an official quote from some of the vendors, but just pricing out through the web and stuff like that. We were looking at probably around $60,000 just for the modular dugouts. Again, we do have the site work issue, you know, digging into one hill and building up another to support those structures, so you know, that the dugouts we're getting aren't the only option, but you know, that's what I was directed to pursue, and that's what I pursue.
And how many quotes did we get, or bids did we get on that?
We got two bids on the construction, one bid on the electrical.
Do you feel if we had more time to research it and look into it, we might find a better price?
It's possible. I can't say for sure. It was a pretty tight timeline to get those dugouts constructed, basically this fall before the winter, so they would be available till spring. If it was a summer project, it might be less, it might be more, I can't say.
That's my concern, that there is a rush to it. And if the girls have used the facilities that they had for a while now, that if we didn't put a rush to it, that we might be
It's possible, but I can't say for sure.
Right.
How specific were the RFPs that were put out? Were the RFP put out for the bid? Or did we just, did it just say we want two dugouts?
No, they were very specific.
They were.
Drawing specifications, the whole night.
Okay. And this is what we
Thank you. Any further questions?
If I can make one last comment, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I agree with Mike. We went into this wanting to have a fair facility for the girls so that it was compatible to the boys' facility. We were, if I remember correctly, given some pricing ideas of what it might cost to get to that point. I don't remember seeing anything like this, so I think that's where I'm feeling a little confused about it. I mean, I understand that's not something you can guess on at that point.
No, but you're right, because I did pull the athletic committee meeting minutes from when we spoke, and, you know, much much like anything, somebody throws out a figure and we lock into that figure without really doing any research on it. And the minutes contain a number of $50,000. So I think that's why, you know, we, you know, in retrospect, should I have included that in the minutes, yes, because it was discussed in the minutes, but it should have been listed as an unbid project. I do appreciate Mr. Perzui's effort here in the work that he has done to get us to this point. But you're right, I think the minutes drove our mindset around this, but that's what was discussed in the meetings, and we always strive to try to be as accurate as we can with the minutes. Any further discussion?
Is there anything we can do to reduce the cost? I mean, is this a lump sum cost, or is it a itemized bid that we received in any way, shape, form?
In my discussions, which I would not advocate for, but you could remove the fencing, which would again potentially create some safety issues for our athletes and also for the people attending the games. But I believe that Wilson School District gave some consideration to that. I don't know if they moved forward with the fences at all. Do you know, Rob?
I'm not sure about Wilson, but I did speak with the architects that did the specifications and asked them about revisions that could be done to save money and aside from, you know, changing the quality of the block structure and some, you know, quality of fencing, you're not talking about moving the needle that much, maybe docking $5,000 off that price.
What is the, what's the cost of, if you break the fencing out, what's the cost?
I don't know.
Oh, all right. I think that's another issue, is that this thing was all lumped together on this.
I mean, we're looking at a four-foot-high fence. I mean, that's not providing a lot of protection. I mean, it's
Did you ever run into a four-foot fence, Jim?
I'd rather not run into a fence.
I'd rather not run into a fence either, but what I'm saying is that the fence keeps people from easily coming onto the field, and it keeps you from falling into the crowd. I mean, that's basically what it does. I mean, I'm not, you know, I prefer that we have safety for our students, but if removing the fence reduces the price enough that the board is willing to support it, then remove the fence.
Oh, no, I was just interested in what it contributed to the overall cost. That's
I mean, one of the things that is being pointed out a number of times is the fact that the site constrains us and the fact that we're getting additional cost because of that. Was there any consideration in adjusting the location of the field? And when I look at that field, it's kind of not all the way into the field. It looks like it's kind of set on the corner. Could we have pushed that field up 30 or 40 feet and possibly reduce some of the impacts that were occurring here? It could cause a great
I think there's another athletic field, I don't remember what it is, on the other side. It's used for other purposes, Jim.
All for the question.
Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Can I show hands, please, for those non-in favor?
Raise.
No.
So, motion carries? Okay.
Item Item 8F. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors authorize district administration to accept the fee proposal from KCBA to provide architectural engineering services which represents an on-call professional services agreement for various work orders for maintenance projects identified in the five-year maintenance program. The fee is a sliding scale percentage, percent of construction cost based upon the identified scope of each work order and construction value range greater than $250,000. A fixed fee will be determined for projects with a value range of $250,000 or less.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? I'm just gonna say I'm not gonna support this, but I do wanna thank the effort of Mrs. Guidish for getting me the information I asked for at the last board meeting.
So it's talking about a fixed fee, but the fixed fee has not been established yet, is that correct?
It's talking about the sliding scale and in order, looking at the projects that are on the horizon for 17, 18 this year and 18, 19, and in the interest of getting the specifications together and getting the bid out on the street and getting an award, so that we can get this work done. As soon as the students leave the buildings and get it done during the summer, we've identified the HVAC, the geothermal well field, the HVAC, major system replacements, Jackson Malderane, field regressing at Reifden, secure vestibules, there's generator in there, and some envelope or masonry repointing. And KCBA, we, what we would do is actually bundle all of that together, and it would the front end, you know, specifications, it would be one document, and we would be going out, and then the back end, the actual detail, the general contractor, HVAC, electrical. So if we did all those together, and this is what they're suggesting, it would be over $2 million. And that sliding scale of $2 million is 8% or 170,000. So that's really what they're indicating. Bundle them, even though they're kind of different, you could still bid it all together and have the document reflect everything that you need. And then as far as LED and security cameras, you can better define them and come up with a fixed fee versus a percentage. And we also have the option of looking at state contract and both purchase and install them. So we're still evaluating those, but
Any additional discussion?
Have we Mrs. Guidish, have we inquired with AEM or any other architectural firms locally regarding their fee structure?
I did not inquire with them. I did some general research on fee structures of architects, engineers, and the range is 6 to 12%. I actually look back at EI associates when we used them for the elementary, and the minimum with them was anything over $5 million was at 6%. And below $5 million, you know, a little bit more. So I what they proposed seemed reasonable based on that, and really just trying to move ahead. KCBA is very familiar. So they pretty much have done some of the legwork, in a sense, and know they can hit the ground running writing the specifications, we're having to almost go back, you know, a couple months explaining to another architect, well, this is really what we want to do. So it's just really in the interest of trying to move these ahead, these projects ahead, which is the direction that I believe we got from the board. You know, Rob, do you want to add anything?
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Item 8G. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the donation of a Baldwin acrysonic piano to the school district from Mrs. Joanne Pope. The piano is in very good condition and is valued at $2,050.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Dr. Phillips a bet for his office.
It's gonna be a veranda.
Tipping the average. I'd just like the comment, I think it's very generous.
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Personal committee, Dr. Bender.
Part A, I move that the Board of School Directors approve the following resignations of administrative staff, certificated staff, support staff, certificated substitutes, support substitutes, and extracurricular staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I would like to make a comment.
Mrs. Koach.
I would like to thank Dr. Davies for all the work you've done with curriculum and for the stay on in the lab program. It's been a pleasure working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can also wish you well in your new position.
Thanks. Thank you for the opportunities you gave me, and we have some great teachers to work with, very dedicated and administrators. And I've learned so much being here, and I'll miss you guys.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of School Directors approve the following retirements listed in Part B as stated on the agenda, administrative staff, certificated staff, and support staff.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Have we, have we established the start date yet for the Owan principal, or is that something you're still negotiating?
We're waiting on the I'm sorry. We're waiting on the formal approval, and then we'll negotiate that.
Mrs. Koach, did you have a comment?
Actually, I'd like to thank Susan Pope for her years here. She, it's been a pleasure. She was wonderful with the Exeter Community Education Foundation, just really, really helped out. I trust her retirement will be exciting.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under appointments, I move that the Board of School Directors approve the appointment of Jeffrey T. Freeze as a Watan Creek principal, replacing Susan Cook in an annual salary of $120,000 effective upon release from his current district.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I would like to make a comment, please.
Mrs. Koach.
With all due respect to Mr. Freeze, whom I have never met, I will be voting no on this motion. My concern is not with Mr. Freeze per se, but I have serious concerns regarding some unresolved procedural issues. Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Mr. Quinter.
Again, with no Mr. Freeze, I read your I read your resume. You look like you are a fine qualified individual. However, I will be voting no on this because I know nothing other than the resume about Mr. Freeze. I have not been able to talk to him about his philosophy of dealing with the public. I've not been able to talk with him about his philosophy of dealing with our staff at Owan. I don't know how he feels about our curriculum. There's many things I don't know, and I can not vote in favor without the information.
Any further discussion?
I would just like to welcome Mr. Freeze. I have a bit of a conflict of interest in that my wife does teach at Owan, so I won't talk more about that. But what I will say is that at the start of this process, I know I specifically asked for a process and a timeline that was quickly provided and followed, and I appreciate that we went through that process. I thought it was thorough.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Mr. Freeze, would you like to say something?
Certainly. Just again, I'm looking forward to being able to get to know you guys better and to be able to develop those relationships with you and the community and humbled that has opportunity to work with folks at Owan Creek. Nothing but the best, I heard nothing but the best about the family consent there. So again, thank you. I appreciate it very much. I look forward to my time here next year.
So how much how much influence do you have with your former employer? Are you gonna be able to come like tomorrow, or what?
I'm gonna come and negotiate with you.
I'd take Russ with me.
I'll continue with Part C, the appointments, and move that the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the appointments of certificated staff, support staff, certificated substitutes, support substitutes, and extracurricular staff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Our last item under appointments is I move that the Board of School Directors approve the guest teachers listed on the agenda.
Second. The motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
I move that the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following leaves of absence listed in Part D for certificated staff and support staff.
Second. The motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following requests for change of status as listed in Part E.
Second. The motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the attached list of course requests attached to Part F of the agenda.
Second. This is an action, not a report? Okay. For the course request, so that's incorrect, we moved it into the agenda. So this is, this F, course request, is an action. Okay, I'm going to say a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I move that the Board of School Directors approve the staff conferences listed in Part G of the agenda.
Second. The motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Part H, memorandum of agreement, I move that the Board of School Directors approve the attached memorandum of agreement between the Exeter Township Education Support Professionals and the Exeter Township School District to amend Act 3, Section 7 of the collective bargaining agreement.
Second. The motion and a second, any discussion?
Can I just ask, who would be the signator for the association?
Ross Lyler.
Ross Lyler, President, Ross. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
That completes personnel.
Thanks, Dr. Bender. Student functions, Mrs. Kutcher.
Item A, just reporting the field trips below the, within the 60 mile radius that have been approved. Item B, I move that the Board of Directors approve the following field trip beyond the 60 mile radius, which is the senior high music students requesting to travel to New York City on March 21st, 2018 to participate in a Broadway workshop with actors from the show Wicked.
Second. The motion and a second, any discussion?
I've checked on the show Wicked and it's about the other witch and the Wizard of Oz.
Yeah, it's neat.
I thought it was named after him.
He is the other wizard.
Any further discussion?
Warlock, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, I move that the Board of Directors approves the request of Bernadette Burko, doctoral candidate in Maculada University to work with our Director of School Musicals as she conducts research as part of her dissertation.
Second. The motion and a second, any discussion?
What is her dissertation on school musicals?
When she had asked for the ability to do that, it had something to do with the impact of the school musicals, of student engagement.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Item D, I move that the Board of Directors approves a tuition agreement between Hogan Learning Academy LLC and the Exeter Township School District for special education services for student number 180819 beginning October 2nd, 2017 through the end of 2017-18 school year. The district is not responsible for any cost for displacement.
Second. The motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Item E, I move that the Board of School Directors approves Exter Eagles Environmental E3 Club as a student activity account. Envirathon is a natural resource environmental education program that combines classroom learning and outdoor activities and this exposure to nature and seeing how humans impact the natural world provide invaluable lessons for understanding ecosystems and our environment and read about the rest.
Second. The motion and a second, any discussion?
Can you tell me who the, the teachers, the advisors?
Lori Surapparoon.
Oh, yeah.
Is that Lori? Surapparoon.
Surapparoon.
Lori Surapparoon.
Okay, yeah.
Do we already have Envirathon?
We do. This is just a, I'm sorry, we do. This is just to open up a student activity account.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item F, I'm reporting that student 180808, a senior, has been given permission to attend Exter Township Senior High School as a non-resident student for the 2017-18 school year in accordance with Policy 202, eligibility of non-resident students, and that's all.
That's an action?
No, it's just a report.
It says action, so it should be just a report. Okay. Item 11, Quicken Programs, Cricket Committee, Mr. Quinter.
Yes, sir. Dr. Davies has published the final version of the mission and vision statements to all the participants in the committee. If you have any comments, please get them in soon or I'll have to do it.
Actually, we're going to post that tomorrow. We're planning on posting it tomorrow so that it can sit for 28 days.
Okay.
And that's publicly accessible, right?
It's going to be at the library and it's going to be.
In the administration building or website.
The final, the other announcement is next Cricket Committee meeting is on 6 November, Monday. Since it will be my last one, I was thinking of having it catered in a bar. But I'm still looking to see if we'd like maximum attendance and if it's not here, I'm sorry.
Don't even be bidding it out.
First of all, real people.
Thank you, Mr. Quinter. Technology Committee, Mrs. Peja.
No report.
Berks County IU Board of Directors, Mr. Quinter.
No reports, sir.
Athletic Committee, Mr. Japina.
Yes, this is an item that we deferred taking an action on in September. It is recommended, actually, we deferred to take further clarification and Dr. Phillips, I will ask you if you connected with Tom, which I believe you did. So I'll read the motion and you can just fill the board in about the administrative regulations that you talked about. It's recommended the Board of School Directors approves the establishment of a junior high girls lacrosse program for 7th and 8th graders to start in January of 2018. The Board of School Directors authorizes administration to complete the necessary steps, including registration with the PIAA to establish the team and work with the parent group who will provide all funding and transportation for the team for at least a three-year period. And then at the last board meeting, we had asked, you can fill, folks.
I met with Mr. Legath to the board direction that we would have a document or template going forward for these types of requests. So he's presently putting that together and we will bring that to the board for acceptance.
And the point of the document is to, in effect, take a three-year period when we approve something that's new to ensure that we continue to have booster involvement and we continue to have enrollment in the activities and so that a program that gets, the parents have come and pitched to us where they've told us that we'll fully support it and we're not asking you for anything, we just want to be authorized so we can compete competitively in PIAA. So we're kind of taking their word at it and basically saying, sure, we'll approve that for you, but we're going to take a three-year moratorium in investing anything back into the program till we look at booster club support, participation in the program and those sorts of things.
And the document will include those minimum specifications.
I'm sorry, did we receive a second on that?
No, we didn't.
Give a second.
Give a second.
Correct.
Okay, any further discussion? Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Legislative Liaison, Township Liaison, Mr. Quinter.
No reports, sir.
Berks Career and Tech Center, Joint Operating Committee, Mr. DeSier.
They had an auction of the house. It was successful. They made a profit. And for those of you who are not familiar with this, there's a student-built house in this. There's a, there's a piece of land that the, that the Berks Career Technology Center bought some 20 years ago and there are still, believe it or not, the subdivision still has 27 lots left. So they build a house every two years.
Is this an oldie?
Yes. Yeah, actually, just up like to an adjacent road to Friedensburg where the school is. But this is the third year in a row that they, that the house has won the Parade of Homes in Berks County. Yeah, it's really, it's really a wonderful project and what they have recently done was they've taken any of the associated shops from the west campus, which is the one up by the airport, and they're going to move them out there because these are the kids that work on the house. So it just makes sense that those shops should be located where the house is. But it's, if you, when you see it, you would just be amazed at the amount of town that's there and.
Russ, I recall a couple of years ago, we held a board meeting in DCTC.
Yes, and you were certainly welcome to do that again.
Well, I was wondering, I mean, I thought it was kind of cool to be able to see what they did and have a tour of the facility.
What they start doing, what we do now before every meeting, after the dinner. But before, before every meeting, we have a tour of an individual shop and they invite students to the shop. They have a very successful welding program. And I did not realize it, but welders are certified by the degree of the weld and the thickness of the metal. So there was a graduate there that had, that had five certifications when he left school. His second year out of school, he made $106,000 a year welding. And, and I only bring that up because I get concerned that we, that the old stigma is still tied to the tech school. You know, the stigma where kids that can't be successful at school, that's where we send them. I'll tell you, if kids have an aptitude, if they have a mechanical aptitude and a gift with their hands, you can make a good living. And you know what? Not only can you make a good living, but you can get started without a whole bunch of student loans. So I really think that it's a viable alternative for kids and I just hope that we continue as good a job as we do in promoting it with our students so that they know the opportunity is there.
Last year, Russ, they did a marketing piece that I thought was pretty effective with listing the students and the schools that they, the homeschools that they came from and what they studied and where they were going. I thought that was pretty cool.
Well, isn't it so, Russ, that many of the students from the technology school make, win national awards for outstanding, you know, outstanding whatever they're doing.
They always take national championships and state championships. In fact, the last four years, there's been a team of two that wins the Philadelphia Auto Competition and it's an auto mechanics and a diagnostic competition. And I'll tell you what, first prize is like $30,000 over tours. And these kids bring this stuff home. There's some great things going out there and just great opportunities. And like I said, I just hope that we continue to relay those opportunities to the students here next.
Thank you, Mr. DeSier. Facilities Committee, Mr. Brayden.
I'm going to be working on scheduling a date for our next Facilities Committee meeting. I will coordinate with Mrs. Gies and send an email out to everyone that's on the committee. I'm looking at either the 8th or the 13th of November. I don't know if Mrs. Gies, does he also look at those dates now by a chance to see if there's a comp?
No board conflicts. You said the 8th and?
13th. The 8th is free. Why don't we go with that then? If possible, I'd like to have the name.
I love this big computer.
In the senior high school? Yes, please.
The senior high at what time to start?
Typical.
6:30?
6:30. Four and by 8:30. Go later than 8:30.
Did you say the 8th?
Yeah. Doesn't matter. We don't have to be as long as two hours. So if anyone in the audience or anyone they know would like to come and join us on November 8th, it will be the most exciting thing you'll do for two hours that evening. We will be going through the preliminary ideas hopefully Mr. Persil will bring forth for the upcoming budget season and get an early preview on the season. And also at the same time, hopefully we'll be able to take a tour of the building to see how we're doing on the stage and off, including our basketball court and other facilities.
Where's that high school?
Yes, high school. 6:30, we'll open up in the conference room. Rumors we'll be adding a second and third story to the conference room. Shh, the elders.
Any else, Mr. Brayden?
That's it this time, thank you.
Thank you. Order Committee, Mrs. Peja.
The audit is finished and I guess Ann, we're just waiting for some updates with Maile or something and then we should have in November probably get the audit committee together.
Right. Yeah, I'm waiting for the draft and there's some narrative that I have to finish once I get the draft of the numbers and then, yeah, November's our target, so I'll report to you as soon as I get that.
Okay, thank you. And I also wanted to say when I said the Technology Committee, and we'll say today, I was at a meeting with Dr. Miller, the principals at the high school and the junior high and, Dr. Davies, I don't think you were there, were you, Dr. Davies? And it was about personalized learning and the blended cyber school that we're going to be having. I think as of January of 1890, we're starting out in, with some of the cyber school.
The courses that we're working on building and then we're going to be catalogued in September 2018. They'll be ready for the course catalog, January 2019, and the students will be taking the courses from that, from September 2019, so it's a two-year process.
Yeah. I mean, it is going to be absolutely fantastic what Exeter will be offering, the students here at, you know, at the junior high and I guess it's junior high and senior high we're going to be working on. It is going to be absolutely fantastic, this personalized learning and, you know, I know people are asking about our own cyber school. Well, there's a lot of logistics involved in it all and Dr. Miller and, you know, Dr. Phillips.
Phillips.
Dr. Phillips are doing a great job in getting it all together. So I just wanted to report on that too.
Thanks, Mrs. Peja. Payment requests, Mrs. Peja.
Yes, we have payment requests for October 2017. A total list of payments from the general fund was $987,704.64 and from the capital account, $11,518.50. I move that we pay our bills.
Second. The motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Peja. Superintendent's Report, Dr. Phillips.
Thank you, Dr. Hammer. The fall season, the fall sports season is coming to a close. As usual, most of our teams are in there fighting to make playoffs, districts and move on to states. As previously stated, the comprehensive plan will be on display tomorrow in the Administration Building, in the library, as well as on our website. Building, in the library, as well as on our website. October ninth, we had an in-service that focused on our personalized learning, which is part of the comprehensive plan, that was, were one of the hot topics that was on the focus. We received some really great news last Tuesday. Lorraine has earned the title of High Achievement Award for the sixteen seventeen school year, and will re, Title One High Achievement Award for the sixteen seventeen school year, and will receive the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Title One Distinguished School Award. The Character Counts Program, improving our community through caring citizenship and cooperation. With hearts as big as Texas, staff and students from the Exeter Township School District Reifton School collected money for the flood ravaged Kingwood Branch Library in Kingwood, Texas. The money was raised as a caring response to Hurricane Harvey's destruction, and totaled over eight hundred and thirty dollars. One hundred percent of the donations collected will be used to purchase brand-new books for the school's library. Fall Fun Day was held at Owatni Creek on Saturday by our EPT. It was well-organized, it was a huge success. We featured a hayride, pumpkin patch, pumpkin decorating, a DJ, slapshot from the Reading Royals, a moon bounce, the fire company, a police canine demonstration, magician, and many more games and activities. As well, the Trout in the Classroom Project is set to go, with the eggs of the fish arriving the first week of November. That is the extended report for tonight.
Next, Dr. Phillips. Any other matters from board members?
Can I, can I confirm that we're having a community forum?
Oh, I'm sorry, is that announced?
Yes.
October twenty fourth, it'll be in the Reifton School, starting at six o'clock, I believe.
How will we be advertising this?
Seven, I'm sorry, seven. As, as we do all our advertisements, it will go out across our website, our, in the newspaper, I believe, right? And we run.
I've identified it in the paper, yeah. But we will be doing that, and it is on the website. Can, can it go through the phone system? Is that possible?
Sure.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Dr. Hamburg, I would just like to thank you and the administration for the very informative presentation that many of us attended last night on the transgender issue. I appreciate Mr. Lockinger's colleague's presentation, I thought it was very informative, and I look forward to the next discussion on that, which I believe is October thirtieth. Thank you, thank you.
I heard last night that the presentation on the thirtieth was started at six o'clock?
Yes.
The newspaper, I think incorrectly, had six thirty.
Okay.
Accept the motion for adjournment?
That was for you.
No moves.
For a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.